It is Thursday, Tuesday, November 25th, 2014. And this is the Town of Auburn Planning Board meeting. And I am calling it to order at 7:00 PM. And would everybody please stand to salute the flag? My pleasure and allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic which stands one nation, one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And we have our Pola Corporation here?
Yes. Mr. Chairman, Stephen Medows and Eric O'Connell here on behalf of Pola Corporation. With me this evening is Mr. David Harding, the Director of Warehousing for Pola.
Okay, yeah.
As the board may be aware, what I filed for is consent of the planning board under Section 16 of Chapter 48, which requires vote of four members of a five-member board. And how many members do we have in attendance?
We have four.
Okay. So what's at stake for Pola is if we don't obtain the consent, we have to wait two years.
Why don't I read it? Then everybody will understand.
Okay. But I'd just like to let you know that my client has instructed me that if we don't have five members, we'd like to wait until we had five in attendance in light of what's at stake for the time.
To be honest with you, I think you should go ahead with it rather than wait for five members. It's gonna, you never know with all the vacations coming up and whatever, that you're gonna get five members.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Maybe I'll consult with my folks.
Why don't you talk them into it?
You're a lawyer, right?
While you're doing that, I'll read the thing, okay? "No appeal, application, or petition which has been unfavorably and finally acted upon by the special permit granting or permit granting authority shall be acted favorably upon within two years after the date of the final unfavorable action unless a special permit granting authority or permit granting authority finds by a unanimous vote of a board of three members or by a vote of four members of a board of five," which we are, "or two-thirds vote of a board of more than five members specifically specific and material changes in the conditions upon which the previous unfavorable action were based and described such changes in the record of its proceedings unless all but one of the members of the planning board consents thereto and after notice is given to parties in the nearest of the time and place of the proceeding when the questions of consent shall be considered. Any petition for variance of application for a special permit which has been transmitted to the permit granting authority or special permit granting authority may be withdrawn without prejudice by the petitioner prior to the publication of a notice of public hearing thereon." Okay, so what we saw, what I saw, was that you reduced the size of the sign, which evidently appeared to be one of their difficulties.
The difficulty, yes.
Can you show us?
Yes.
See how big it isn't now and how it's gonna be?
Sure. I wrote down through the chair that the original proposal was for a surface area of 7,540 square feet. The new proposal, which is all subject to the ZBA's jurisdiction and review, is for 4,241 square feet. So it's significantly reduced. And you can see that I did submit these with the applications, but this is the original larger, and that's the new proposal.
So the special permit, if we were to issue a special permit for Pola, all this would do is allow you to go back to the ZBA and get approved?
Correct. That's right. You're not issuing a special permit. We haven't applied for that yet. This is to allow us to.
Allow you to go back.
Right. We're still subject to their jurisdiction.
Right. That's what I was trying to get at for us.
And what the board is looking to deem here is that the changes in the plan are specific and material.
Upon the reasons for the original denial, which was the size. So it's been significantly reduced.
By what, 30% or more?
Yes.
44% according to your letter.
Okay, all right.
For the surface area.
Do you have a picture of it?
Yes, I distributed those.
That's the original.
Yep.
That's the original.
And the other one is?
I like the original.
I know, me too.
I do too.
So.
Any questions, I believe?
Far as I'm concerned, the, I see no reason why we wouldn't turn around and allow them to go back to the ZBA for this thing. And that would be crazy not to. We're not really making any major decision here. It's up to the ZBA whether this is a matter of fact or not, whether it's gonna go through or not. So I would, I'd make a motion to allow them to go back to the ZBA and present their case to the ZBA. I'll second that.
A motion's been made. And second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
That was quick.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Yeah, take care.
I thought we should hold you here till nine or something. If we gotta be here. Okay. Okay, yeah. Yeah, we got A and I's, okay. 36 Walnut Street and 4 Pioneer Lane, you have two A and I's? Okay.
So the applicant for 36 Walnut, I believe, is here?
And, come on up and throw two of them, tell us what we got. It's a large parcel there. We just wanted to.
We're gonna do 36 Walnut first.
Oh, okay.
You'll be right next, all right?
I thought you were talking to me.
No problem.
Okay. And what we have here, Walnut Street, yeah?
Yep.
Does it all conform?
It conforms, and actually, there's no building lots being proposed here. This is the original lot.
Yep.
He's going to divide into these additional parcels here, which will then be transferred to the ownership of the neighboring parcels.
The two existing houses?
Yep. So we're not looking at building any new houses or anything like that.
Just giving them all land?
Yes.
Okay.
And so these two lots are not buildable lots, but they'll be.
Added to those.
Added to those, which will make them conforming. And the existing lot will remain conforming.
All they're doing around here is adding this to this and this to this.
Yep.
All right. How did you train the motion?
Motion to approve.
Yeah, okay.
I'll second it.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
So members will sign the plan, and you can take it with you tonight. You're welcome. Here's a Mylar, you know, marker for your Mylar, and then the two paper copies below.
Do you know what the right terminology for that is? Is it to approve? The approval not required?
Yes. To approve that the plan does not require approval under the subdivision control.
That makes a lot more sense.
Yeah.
Even got the date right?
Almost. Hey, Mylar.
I'm gonna give you the Mylar and then one of the paper copies.
Good answer.
That'll be recorded at the registry. Thanks, Jim.
So when you run up the poll, make sure you include that the thing has been reduced in size, which was the major problem.
Sure. Thank you. Have a good night.
Okay, we're all set with that. Now we have 4 Pioneer, right? So there's a large parcel there with an existing home on it, and I want to divide it and get a buildable lot. It's conforming, the frontage is proper, and the size is proper. Okay. And this is the new one here? Yeah. Okay. Does it conform, everything?
They do conform.
Any different objects?
Not necessarily. I am curious about the existing easement and the new sanitation easement. Just, do you mind just providing some more detail on that?
Well, the, we bought the property, obviously, the original owner of that property, the sewer line ends on Pioneer Lane, right where that manhole is in front of you. The sewer line ends there. It doesn't continue down the, and it crosses through there, and it crosses onto the next street. So when they built that house, they must've came out straight and then went down to that manhole, and then goes through the next property, and it drains to the next street.
Okay.
And I don't know what, that's the way it was done.
So this is existing sewer line?
It's already there. From that, just that one single family home. It just is one, a single line.
Okay.
For that home.
Okay.
And that's because they, I don't know why they didn't tie into that manhole where the pen is, but for some reason, you know, they could've came to that manhole and straight across, but they went, maybe because they owned the property and it felt it was easier to, I don't know why they did it that way, but. Just to make it hard for you.
Well, it would be tough to put a foundation in through that sewer pipe.
Suicide, yeah. No, no, we'll house this playing room to put it behind it, yeah.
You could set a house back here. Bill, yeah, with the driveway, I'm just curious, with the driveway in that easement, it would have to go through the easement, does that?
I hadn't seen through the chair. I hadn't seen the plan before, so I'm trying to, I know where this sewer manhole is that you're referring to. So this, this is the existing house?
Yes.
And you're looking to cut this parcel off?
Yes.
And?
Make that a buildable lot.
This sewer line is already connected to the same home?
It's already there, yeah, it's there.
And you're just gonna grant an easement so that you're able to maintain the sewer line there if you were to sell this house?
Yeah.
That's correct?
Yes.
And the only sewer going to this line is this current house?
That's correct.
So the only purpose of the easement is for this house?
Yes.
Okay. And I'm sorry, what was the question we got in the driveway?
I'm just wondering if they provide drive access off Pioneer, and it has to cross that sanitation easement.
That wouldn't be an issue?
It's not an issue, right?
No, no. My only concern is I would just wanna make sure that if this is the only house being served by this easement, then I wouldn't have a problem.
Okay.
The driveway crossing wouldn't conflict with the use of the easement.
So with a new house on that parcel, you might want that to tie into the sewer directly as opposed to?
It won't tie into that sanitation line.
We would have to, right, we'd have to locate what you're proposing.
Right.
Unless, you know.
But for, to approve that as a lot for residential house, that's not an issue with?
At this point, no. I mean, we'd wanna see a proposed plan for how they're gonna connect in the future.
Right.
That wouldn't be up to us.
In other words, you couldn't connect it to this existing line. Well, no, the sewer department said I could.
Yeah, they potentially could.
Yeah.
I'd wanna see a plan on that.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
Well, again, that's not an odd jurisdiction anyway.
I'll make a motion to approve that the approval not required plan has met the thresholds.
I'll second that.
Are you that right?
All in favor?
Aye.
There's no line for the date.
If you don't mind just putting in underneath, thanks.
What's the, 24th?
25th.
You guys can stop signing the paper ones if you'd like.
Well, I had six made, I left them. You only get to sign the three and the required part?
Yes. So two of the papers, and you don't have to sign any ones yet.
Do you need another two extra papers?
No problem.
Recycle? So you need to sign three of these, don't you? Yes. One, two, three.
Two of those. And this is the third.
Okay. Do we have to keep one of these?
So we'll keep one of these, and you'll take one of the signings for your records. Okay, thank you. There you go. And you're all set.
Take the Mylar to the registry?
Yes.
And the other sign one also?
The other sign one you're gonna keep.
Okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Have a nice Easter.
Hey, if we could avoid the Winter Island. All right, so that's it for the A and I's.
Okay. All right, so we have 48 Elmwood Street LLC requesting a special permit for earth fill under Section 9.6 of the Auburn Zone Bylaws for property located in 48 Elmwood Street. Auburn NASSMAP 6 Parcel 172.
Is that also combined with the next paragraph?
I don't know. Two of them are together on it.
It's actually two different addresses on Elmwood.
Yeah.
Applying for earth fill permits.
But it's the same owner?
No, two owners as well.
Okay.
Hi, how you doing? I'm Carol Redden from H S and T Group, and I'm here representing Harry Avery.
Can you talk a little bit louder so we can hear you?
Sure.
Because you're interested in the Elmwood Street one.
Sure, no problem. My name is Carol Redden, and I'm from H S and T Group. I'm a professional engineer, and I'm here representing Harry Avery for 48 Elmwood Street. And this is down the street from the project that is also on Elmwood Street that is on the way to the president. Before we get into this plan, I want to provide to the board some revised plans. I've been meeting with Bill Coyle to make some revisions, and I talked to Eric about this, and he suggested I come tonight with a revised plan and some 11 by 17 copies for the board for your information. So our existing lot is about 14,200 square feet, and on this lot, we wish to construct a three-bedroom, single-family home. We meet all the zoning setbacks and whatnot, and the reason we're here before the planning board tonight is due to the fill requirement, which are going to over the 500 cubic yards of fill on this site. The project is located in the highway business and Residence A zoning districts, and because we traverse two districts, we had a zoning interpretation done by the town, and we are allowed to build a single-family home on this lot. The house will have a one-car garage to the side, and is adequate parking within the driveway for second cars, we meet the parking requirements. The driveway will be paved. There will be water and sewer connections off of Elmwood Street. At present, the lot slopes away from Elmwood Street towards the back of the lot. There is a guardrail that exists in front of this lot, and what we're proposing to do is to remove a portion of the guardrail and then add like a turnaround, a turn loop at the end in the direction of traffic so that, for safety's sake. As I mentioned, we've had several iterations on this plan set, and going back and forth, size house, where to place it. We reduced the size of the house, and as such, we were able to significantly decrease the amount of fill on the property, and the amount of grading, and the amount of walls. We now have just two short walls, that's about 47 feet a wall or so, and each of those walls will be less than two feet high. One will be just to catch the grade along the northern portion or the right-hand side of the lot, and the other will be right here along the driveway, and we'll add some steps to get from the lawn down to the driveway. With this present design, we're about 865 cubic yards of fill. And I should mention that our original proposal, which had the multiple walls and whatever, was almost 2,000 cubic yards, so we've, again, significantly cut down on our design that way. What we're also proposing on this lot will be a silk fence and hay bale, and that will serve as the limit of construction. And at the conclusion of construction, the hay bales and silk fence will be removed, and the entire lot will be loomed and seeded, and Mr. Coyle suggested that perhaps we hydroseed the lot, and we'll be amenable to that if that's what the board wishes. And with that, that concludes my presentation. Open it up for questions from the board?
Any questions?
Yeah, I'd like to defer the project as it stands for the additional fill to Bill Coyle.
Through the chair, as the engineer mentioned, that we've had several meetings. We started with the original plan submitted, that I believe had approximately 300?
Yeah, about 300.
Feet of retaining wall?
Yes.
Proposed, and just under 2,000 yards of fill. So after a number of meetings, we went back and forth and came up with, I think, is what's best suited for this lot in terms of the location of the garage, under, being on the downhill side, sliding the house upward to the southerly direction uphill, gradient, and we've been able to minimize the amount of fill. So I think they're at a point where it's minimal amount of fill for the site should work about as best as you can, again, for the property. I think hydroseeding the area once it's loomed and seeded should establish the vegetation to stabilize the area. So I don't think there's really too much more that can be done with the site at this point to minimize the fill anymore.
What about that guardrail that they have to take down to enter the driveway?
What they'll be doing is where the guardrails currently will be filled in, so that the need for the guardrail in their front yard will be eliminated, and then we will require them to end the guardrail, turn it at a radius, and put a terminal end facing away from the traffic.
How's your favor on the way that this is gonna come out?
I'm agreeable to it. Again, we've had several meetings on this. The original design, the basement floor was about 10 feet above existing grade, which would have required about 10 feet of structural fill. The current design in the southerly portion, I believe the basement floor elevation is either at or just below grade, and on the far end out by the garage, I think it's about five feet out of the ground. So I think versus being 10 feet, the current design minimized the impacts to the site. I think it's gonna look fine once it's constructed versus the original plan which had many walls.
What about runoff to the abuttes if there are any?
I think what I would suggest that we do as a condition would be to have chambers put in for the rooftop drains, infiltrated chambers, the rooftop runoff, and that way, any of the impervious area that they're adding, we can put that back into the ground to try to minimize any impacts to the neighboring properties. So that would be a condition though, because that's not currently shown, but I would recommend that as a condition.
That's all I got there. Anybody?
Did you, do you think just for the roof area, or you also for the driveway as well?
I believe, I think it would be good idea, the driveway and rooftop, so we collect all the impervious area.
Okay. The red dash line that's on the plan there, that's not on our plan, I was just curious what that was.
This is the zoning line.
Oh, okay.
And then this other dash line here is the building setback, just to show you that we're meeting the house within the setback.
Ronnie, you have it?
Right.
We'll settle with it.
Ladies and gentlemen?
It could be an improvement.
Yeah, we.
Come up here and please state your name.
Sure. I'm Jim Larrabee. We're at 50 Elmwood. And we are, the way the street is a hill, we're concerned about how the fill is gonna affect our land as far as drainage and whatnot, because we have had water in our basement. We had part of our driveway open up as a sinkhole. We filled that, that diverted the water. We haven't had water in our basement for four years since then. We've put a lot of expense into that driveway, and we don't want anything missing.
Wash out, huh?
Well, as a town engineer.
Well, you're uphill from this site.
We are, but, you know, if they filled it too high.
Yeah. No, the grade, I believe, Carol, the grade you're coming up to is not, you're matching grade on the property line.
Yes, we're matching grade before we hit the property line all around.
So it shouldn't affect your property. Any groundwater issues would be due to the high groundwater on that hill, which wouldn't, this wouldn't affect that.
And you're maintaining the slope.
But I have probably slopes, so.
And you're maintaining the slope towards Southbury Street.
Yes, sir.
Answer your question.
I can direct it to your property.
Well, I guess, I guess my, I'm Sammy Larrabee.
Okay, well, come up here.
I guess my concern is where the property marker is, the land slopes. Okay, so you were looking, are you looking to make it flat and fill part of our land?
No, no, there is no fill. This is your, this is your, this property right here. This is as you're going, think about you're going up the hill.
Okay.
So if you look at, this is the property line, all of our proposed areas, which are represented by these solid black lines, are terminating on our property. We will not be touching your property.
Okay, so there'll still be a little bit of a slope between the two properties?
Right, and we're maintaining the grade that's there now, so.
And I understand why you're filling. Obviously, it's because you need to get the facilities into the property, because it goes like this. And I was listening to you explain the lay of the house, but I just have one question. Were you talking about putting the driveway on the side near our driveway or the other side?
No, ma'am. The driveway will be on the other side.
On the other side, okay. That's what I kind of understood, but I was just kind of wondering if it was on our side, how close it would be to us.
Yeah, the other side is actually the lower end, so it's gonna be a garage, and so it makes sense to put it on the lower end.
So there won't be like, like our land's not gonna
So there won't be like, like our land's not going to go, it's just, the only place that it slopes is the upper section. The rest of it, it's kind of like flattened, level. My concern was that they were going to want to fill it all the way up to ours, and then we were going to get runoff.
Well, you got the answer to that, okay?
Okay.
Thank you.
Anyone else on this one?
Make a motion to approve the earthwork, earthfill special permit.
Well, I'd like to, I'd like to say that we should add the restrictions or the-
With the requirement that the property be hydroseeded within the boundaries and that the applicant provide underground retention, stormwater retention for the impervious area created by the roof and driveway area.
That's good.
Yep.
All right, it's been made and seconded?
Yeah, did you second it?
Seconded, yeah.
Okay, made and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
And next we have. Welcome Homes, from where?
Hey, guys. For the record, my name is Patrick Burke, I'm a civil engineer at H S and T Group, representing Welcome Homes. Peter Hougha, just here from Welcome Homes also. Coming in with a special permit for earthfill for five lots, existing five lots on Gibson Road. Currently, the site, there's five existing lots on Gibson Road, probably 20,000 square feet each. Broken out already as A and R lots. Gibson Road is unapproved right now. It's gravel road off of Elmwood Street. We're also developing, not part of this permit, but 86 and 88 is currently under development by the proponent also. What we're proposing is coming in on Gibson Road for the earthfill permit off of Gibson Road. It slopes to High Ridge Road, about a four to one, three to one slope existing. In order to build the buildings as we're proposing, we're proposing retaining walls along about the middle, midline of the lots and filling it behind them. And then grading down either grass slope, riprap ports deeper over here near the detention area till we get down to the High Ridge Road. We're also in front of the zoning board of appeals right now to allow permitting to family homes. We're proposing duplexes along the site. We're coming in with 10 units total. If we had come in with a conventional subdivision, we also have the ability to subdivide these A and R lots along High Ridge Road with frontage. So we would get 10 units of single-family lots also if we just broke it up.
I'd like to see you do that.
That's normal. It'd be tough, we could do it.
How many square feet of the lots on the ground?
20,000.
Currently existing, he's left, has 20,000.
What's required for a duplex?
For a duplex is 19,000 each. 10,000 for single-family.
Okay, so basically, you're here for an earth-
Yes.
-fill permit. And the earthfill is going to all be done from Gibson Road to the wall, retaining wall behind the individual buildings?
Yes.
That's going to be one contiguous wall going from one end to the other?
Yes.
Can you show me that wall?
Yep, the wall runs from here, it's this gray line. Running from here comes a single wall along here. Then along the, at the end of the cul-de-sac, there's multiple walls here tiered.
What are the heights of that wall?
12 feet here along with the back of this wall. And these are tiered at 12. This is 12, 12 and 4 at the bottom.
So someone's looking at the back of them walls?
There's no houses.
There are no houses down here on High Ridge yet.
There is a house.
Yeah, there is.
On the other side of the-
On this side.
Excuse me, ma'am, you'll have, you'll have a chance. Bill, what, what? Let me know what you're thinking. Let us know what you're thinking.
Well, through the chair, we've had some discussion. We were involved with 86 and 88. And there's been, there were issues with the grading on both of those lots.
Those ones that are running on Elmwood?
Yeah, the two on Elmwood, I'm sorry.
Looks like a mountain goat.
Right, so we've, we had some issues with those just to kind of give you some of the history. And we did work with the proponent and with the engineer to come up with a design that they're still working on implementing, although it hasn't been completed yet. I can say that in discussions with Gibson Road, the original plan from I understood it was that they were going to go in with single-family houses. And the roadway was not going to be paved. Working with the proponent, my requirement would be that they wanted to tie into town sewer, that I wanted the roadway paved. The town ends up, we maintain that road. He knows private, we plow it. It's a difficult road to plow and maintain. They have agreed to pave the roadway, provide a cul-de-sac, provide drainage, provide a detention pond to retain a 100-year storm event so that there's no increase in peak runoff off the site. We have plans under review. We did submit comments. We still have the drainage calculations and hydrology report under review that hasn't been completed yet. I think that the project in general, I think that we would still want to see revised plans come back to us before, I would recommend the board take action.
Through Paul, what, what's going to be done about that banking in the back so that rocks don't come tumbling down into swimming pools and the silt coming off that-
Well, on 86 and 88, they need to get in there and complete the grading. They need to stabilize it, have the slopes seeded and vegetated, complete the retaining walls. There's a swale proposed on the bottom of the, both of those lots to divert the runoff away from the property on High Ridge. But that work hasn't been completed yet to my knowledge. I was there, it still hasn't been completed. So a lot of the things that need to be done to minimize potential impacts to the abutte on High Ridge, that work has not been done. And certainly, if this project were to move forward, my recommendation would be that the board look at restricting development in terms of how much area would be allowed to be developed at a time, whether or not you look at two lots be opened up and worked on and stabilized and not allow-
All over at once.
Until those two lots are vegetated and stabilized. In terms of the earthfill, while we're waiting for a resuminal of plans, what I would suggest that potentially they look at is also an alternatives analysis to see if there is another option to minimize the grading and whether or not that's something to the effect of looking at different slopes. We have three to one slopes now?
Three to one in front of the wall and a-
Two to one in the back. I'm not sure that there is much more that can be done, but I think that we should certainly look at what, are there any other options to minimize the amount of fill? And I think the board should feel comfortable with that if this is going to move forward, that they've done everything to minimize the amount of fill and impacts to that property.
That fill, that fill to me isn't the major issue. I think the major issue is that banking in the back. And I've been up there several times, okay? I'm very, very cognizant of the problems and situations up there. I would, I would almost suggest to the, to the people here that before the houses or anything else is done on that property, that that banking be completely done and secured, seeded or whatever it's got to be done so that we don't have any unstable ground up there. And I think that the rest of the board members, if they've seen the project too, will probably agree with me. I'm not sure, will you agree with me on that? No. Some of the board members will agree with me. But anyway, I think that, I think- How long is it going to take to get the hydrology survey done?
Well, the review should be complete towards the beginning of next week.
And then you're requiring, you would like to see from them, okay, another plan stating what?
An alternatives analysis to look at other slope, proposed slopes and retaining walls to see if there's another option to minimize the fill. Certainly not a full-blown design, but sometimes that we say that we've looked at it, that this alternative is probably the best alternative for the site so that the board can move forward knowing that we've done everything it can do to minimize the fill on the site.
At this point, they don't have permits to put in duplex houses either, do they?
No, no, that's before the Z B A, which I watched the whole meeting the other night and heard all the concerns. I'd like to make a recommendation. Oh, yeah, well, if we're going to, if this is postponed, with, you're going to hear rhetoric. In other words, if this is postponed and they all come up now and it's postponed to another date until all this other stuff comes through, at that particular point in time, they can, they can see the new plans and speak on the new plans. I don't know, if they want to speak now, I don't have any-
I don't either.
Yeah.
You want to come up, but again, you're going to, everything's going to-
I think I want to hear from folks first of all if they came out. I appreciate that.
Yeah, they came out tonight.
I want to make sure that when they do their design work that if there are any additional issues that we can deal with, that those are on the table now. Not to redo them. Does that make sense?
Have you come up?
No, no problem. Anybody have anything to comment from the area? I mean, this will be before us again, but if you want to have, if you want to insert something at this time, now would be the time to do it. State your name, please.
Oh, I'm sorry, Dan Cooney, I live in six High Ridge Road.
Okay.
Used to be number one, I can't figure that out. And the guy right aside of me on the same side of the street is number 72, so I haven't got that figured out yet. But the only thing I'm hoping for is like, Mr. Coyle told me he came down one day, he said they're going to put a swale in there to stop all this coming down, which I can see there because they got rocks piled everywhere. It's what you call, looks like a reservoir type thing. This time, it just poured out and I didn't get no rocks.
All right, well, probably go out the front door, down the stairs and out the front door.
I think Mr. Cooney was-
Where were we?
Want my name again, Dan?
Hasn't changed.
I didn't get no rocks this time.
Okay.
They're coming though. Rain started coming down. But what I did get, I guess you would call it silt. It's like this tan, I probably got 20, 25. Did you see it this morning?
No, no.
It come right down through my yin.
Yeah.
But it's like mucky clay stuff. I think about 25 wheelbarrow full, which I'm more sure in. But if it, I'm just happy if it's being stopped with this. I've been there 39 years, never had any water in my yin. Now I got tons of it. I wish my wife didn't bring the pictures there, but she's got this on a camera with videos and stuff. And you can't, I believe that maybe you give her permission to fix that, we've got it three times so far this year.
On High Ridge?
Yeah, washed out.
Agas, yes, highway?
Yeah, washed right out.
Yeah.
Not drivable. And now this time, where it came down, it was just a small stream, wasn't a river. And it washed out, let's say, the left-hand side of the road going down. I think you drove over this morning, didn't you?
No, I wasn't down on High Ridge.
Oh, you weren't, somebody was with your truck that, uh, or somebody was, same truck. But I just, all this I'm asking, Pete knows. He's been down my house, he spent an afternoon, lost his lunch one day talking to me. He knows the rock went through my pool. The man who put it there came down and told me it went through. I didn't even know it, I was in the house. And then other rocks have come down. And the town has nice enough, they moved those far. But I'm not talking to rocks the size of your chair, I'm talking to rocks 70, 800 pounds. Now what I'm scared of right now is one coming right through the front of the house. Because they are up there and there's plenty of them. But I understand it, like, told me that this swale thing they built it, put it in and stop it. That's all I can say, just put that in. I think it would solve the problem. But I guess that's all I got to say as far as the building goes. He was talking to me about building five houses on High Ridge Road. Good luck. And I should welcome too, but I don't know how.
Well, thank you. Anyone else? No? So they're going to be coming in with-
I think Paul maybe should.
Um, we're also, we live, my name's Tricia Waldridge. This is my husband Scott Waldridge.
Okay.
Uh, we live on 15 Gibson Road. Well, we just had a rainstorm. And it is still quite squishy up by our house. So the drainage still isn't entirely working. And where the rap has been put in, some of that's already starting to wash away. So we do have a concern about the drainage. I have not looked in the cell yet. I don't know if we've still had that problem. And we are also concerned also, since we have well water there and with that. So those are some of our concerns with putting in the fill and with still seeing stuff going down the really steep cliff. I was just shocked that anyone found it buildable in the first place.
Where is 15 Gibson?
We are at the, you see where the cul-de-sac is?
Yep, you see the house at the end of the cul-de-sac?
No, this one is one that's not built yet. We are like over here.
Yeah, right.
So we have this like pork chops shaped yard.
Yeah, the existing pork.
Yeah.
Yeah. So yeah, so we're not on the map. But around here, this is where, again, we were all getting, again, just with the rain, really squishy and some of the rap is beginning to wash away then.
Sure.
So it's currently an issue. So I don't know if putting anything there is going to do-
Disaster.
All right, so is there anything they can do, Bill, to stop the erosion while they are coming back with their new plans?
Well, I think that the key would be is to get in, finish the grading and stabilize. The problem is we're coming up on the winter months. And with snow coming is, it's coming at what they're going to be able to do. Construction fencing, I believe the building inspector had also suggested to the contractor to install some construction fencing at the end of the site, the bottom of the hill to try to, if anything does come down the hill, to hopefully-
Hay bales?
Stop it, yeah. Yep, hay bales, silt fencing. Areas where we're getting any siltation, we can meet on site and we'll get some areas and potentially they could do that as well.
So when are they supposed to come in with new plans for you and the Z B A?
I would refer to-
I think it's the 17th.
Hold on, I have it. It's the 18th.
Yeah, the Z B A is the 18th and-
Yeah.
Of December. Yep.
Well, I mean, when this came in for the A and R process, I think we all had some comments, but it was at a point in which we weren't really within the purview of that conversation. Here, I think it's a little different. And I guess, you know, my comments would be, I think if, you know, trying to create a lot of density on a road and on lots in which it's not naturally occurring, if you're going to do that, I think you then have to make sure that you do it in a way that, you know, protects the neighbors, makes quality plots that, you know, adds to the quality of, in Auburn and obviously comply with all the regulations. And I think the concern, I definitely think we want to see that road paved, I've been down there. In addition, I think the alternatives analysis is a good concept and I would certainly support not only the hydrology review, but restricting the development to two lots at a time to make sure that the lots get stabilized before continuing the line of development. My only other question is, is it within our kind of purview here to hold off on making a determination on this application until the other lots at the end of the street are stabilized?
Yeah, the two on, on Elmwood Street you're talking about?
Yeah.
Well, we want to, I want to postpone this, this entire, this entire situation until we get the, get the new, get the new plans from, from Bill and the updated plans from the builder.
Yeah, definitely, I'm just trying to give them a little sense of kind of where my thoughts are at this point, so he doesn't have to...
And finish up those other two lots.
Wait until the next...
And I'd like to see it do something to secure that imposing threat to them with the rock possibly coming down or something, if it can do it, I mean, it conceivably sounds like it could go through someone's house, that wouldn't be nice.
Just to kind of summarize or give some feedback, so I did meet with Dan and the swale that we're, that the plan has been approved, hasn't been built yet, and Bill has, and my engineer has been basically saying that will solve the problem for High Ridge. I'm hoping to get that in the next couple of weeks, you know, that is the plan. We have had some delays with weather and we've also had some delays with changing a little bit on the existing plan to raise the grade and build the wall a little bit higher on 86. So we've had a few delays there. This corner, this corner right here on 86 is the biggest problem. And this is where we kind of revised the plan and raised this wall. Also, until this is finished right here, we can't really get into building the swale, but we are very close to finishing up. I think it's probably a day or two's work for finishing up the grading around 86 and they can work on the swale, which I think is about three or four days worth of work if we have good weather. So I do, and just for the board's notification too, there is a restriction on the occupancy permit that that will not be issued until the certified as-built has been provided to the town. So you guys, you know, I can't sell that house until that as-built has been completed.
Through the chair, I would just caution you to finish grading around that retaining wall as soon as possible because I, when I did drive by there, I, you could see the wall, hasn't been backfilled on either side. And, you know, I did have some concern with that wall potentially coming down, depending on the weather. So I think it's to your, in your best interest to get that work completed.
Right, that is...
As quickly as possible.
Like Monday, hopefully, I just saw rain for Monday after Thanksgiving, I'm hoping it doesn't. They are planned to hit that first thing and try to backfill around there. And the other thing is, just so you know too, the, after I got, I heard from the building inspector and met Dan down at his site on High Ridge, you know, I went and walked it myself, found one specific area where the silt fence had failed, so I had my guys, you know, restate that, re-put more hay bales there along that line, so, and I, and I did give them myself, I'm trying to address it as they come up. That 86, in my opinion, is the most difficult site out of all of these. And like I said, we're working on that swell and we do hope to get that before, before real winter, you know, in the next couple of weeks.
So what's the pleasure of the board? I'd make a motion to postpone this until we get the plans from the builder and Bill Coyle's hydrology report.
Are we...
Review. So our next meeting is December 10th, obviously if you're going to the ZBA...
There's no time requirement on this, I don't believe.
No, we just want to make sure that...
I mean, that we have to respond by?
No.
Not until we close the hearing. We just want to make sure that we keep the, the hearing, you know, open and that everybody knows...
December 10th?
When the next, the next hearing would be.
We only got one meeting in December, right?
That's correct.
What date is that?
That's the 10th. So you're going on the 17th to the ZBA?
18th, yes.
On the 18th for approval for the, for the multifamily homes, but we don't necessarily, we can't obviously approve a plan for multifamily homes until they approve that.
Well, from what I understand, correct me if I'm wrong, the, the planning board doesn't have any say about the, the two families or not? It's the ZBA who has that.
That's correct.
So, so what we're looking for is we'll try to come up with a revised plan for the fill permit for the 10th with, you know, the two engineers working together, hopefully coming to a resolution there. Then on the 18th, we would know if we're doing all singles or hybrid. And if you watch the meeting, then you'd know that what I kind of offered up was, on this plan, there's five duplexes, but doing more of a blend with two single families and three duplexes, kind of mingling it so it's not as dense. And it seemed amenable, but that's my opinion, it seemed like that was, you know, well received.
Well, we, we don't have anything to do with that anyway.
Yep.
You know, and this is strictly going to be up to the ZBA how, how that's handled.
Yep.
So we're, whether you do single family or multifamily, that's not going to change the amount of fail or your grading or anything like that?
Right, yep. We tried to use the same envelope, the building envelope for the house, whether it would be single family or duplex, so that wouldn't change this plan.
Wouldn't that, wouldn't that change some hydrology calculations though, would you?
If not, if it doesn't change, I mean, I would think your driveways, some of the impervious area would probably decrease.
Okay.
Or reduce a bit.
Just a bit, really.
If you're using the same, you're saying the house size would probably be about the same?
Yes.
It would just be single family as opposed to duplex?
Yep.
So the footprints...
Yeah, these are pretty good footprints for...
Right, right.
Probably bigger than what the real footprint is, we want to be conservative for the hydrology.
Okay, I would second that motion with the one question being if the 10th is a Wednesday?
Or is the 9th?
The 9th.
So the 9th.
See the 9th. Technology, you know?
We'll be here on the 10th, guys.
Good night.
Okay.
So we have a second?
Yep, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? No, that's, hopefully it's... All right, now we have minutes from October 28th.
I'll make a motion to second the 28th.
Did they spell John's name right there?
So I was just going to check.
So it is a motion to approve the minutes, the minutes of October 28th?
I made the motion.
Yep.
I will, I'll second it on faith.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? So the minutes are approved, we have any new business that's coming before us?
No new business.
No new business, okay, no correspondence?
No correspondence.
I entertain a motion that we go home.
I'll make a motion then, John.
Second?
I'll second it or you second it or whatever you want.
I know it's aye.
All in favor, aye.
All in favor, aye.